...in the BOS meeting for August, so we have the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to announce the township is recording this meeting, and if anyone else is recording it, please let me know now. Well, one of the nicest things that the BOS can, the Board of Supervisors can have, and especially to the myself, is to make an award to someone that most remarkably deserves it. So Jerry, would you come up? Susan, would you? Mary, myself? You stand over here.
Anybody taking pictures?
Chief's got pictures.
Who is?
Chief.
Mr. Johnson, who's been in our hearing board for 30 years. Now, that doesn't take some loyalty, ladies and gentlemen. That takes a move from your family, to a world, although he's still making money. Believe it or not, everybody, the first time I met Jerry, I was very mean. Now, I was very intimidated by him. I looked at him, he never smiled. Looks at you with that steely-eyed look, and I wondered, uh-oh, what's gonna happen? He had brought strength, knowledge, and wisdom to the zoning hearing board. He knows all that's going on. He's been a remarkable asset to this township. I'd like to pass it over to the chairman of the zoning board.
I don't have much more to add to that, but we really want to thank Jerry for his service. He's been wonderful in providing us with advice. All the members of the board really appreciate his time and the efforts he gives to give us good advice every month at our hearings. And we have a thought for Jerry that's been engraved to thank him for his many years of service.
Does that take my advice the last time? Don't get me catch, right?
A dollar a year?
Very much so. I appreciate it. In my heart, it was hot. For some nights, I didn't think too much about it.
Jerry, thank you.
He's the most fortunate one, everybody, because he gets to leave early. Is everyone that here signed in at this podium, please? If you've not already done so? You know, sometimes we make mistakes in doing things, and what I've noticed, and as a reminder, that we need to be very careful of, is the placement of yard signs along public rights of way. We're having some major problems with yard signs of organizations, political, and event signs being placed throughout the township. That's in accordance, you have to receive a permit down here at the township building and obtain that, so please contact the township office if you have any questions or any desires to put up signs or such in your yards. I'd most appreciate it for everybody. There are no hearings scheduled before the zoning hearing board, which would take place on Monday night, and also the Planning Commission will not meet in August. Valley Forge Fire Company is announcing, well, I'll bring that up in the announcements. All right, we'll move into business. Board of Supervisors' minutes? Have everyone looked at the minutes?
Yes.
Looked them over?
Yes, sir.
Has everyone looked at the reports?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The one question I have on reports is, is Fred Honeman here?
No.
No, sir.
Oh, I don't see him. He asks for some things that he has a budget for, that he lies on. Would you tell him that in the last paragraph of his report, he can use his money for it, please?
Okay.
And it looks like we don't have enough people to man a second shift or a second section in case there was an emergency.
We're working on that now.
I think you ought to work with Mary also. Maybe we can get something on the website or something in the paper and such like that. But we need to have a, we need to have a full staff, everybody, for this emergency management. So we'll try to get that done.
Any volunteers willing to, or willing to put their time in, please contact Fred Honeman, or we'll be able to get contact with township, we'll be able to get the contact information to you. If you want to volunteer, it's all-volunteer EOC, or supports the residents of the township in times of need and emergency situations. Okay?
Does anyone else have anything to say about reports?
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes and of the reports for this month?
I so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Are there any two-minute reports by the Board Liaison and Committee?
No, sir.
Nothing interesting to happen this month?
Well, we, the Regional Planning Commission reviewed different consultants' response to the request for proposal that we issued, and we did not make a final decision, but three out of the four were selected to be interviewed by members of the Regional Planning Commission, so that will happen at our next meeting.
Oh, good. Sounds good. Okay. Payment of bills, I'd like the treasurer to give our glowing report.
Okay. Actually, I'm gonna give a little bit of a bigger report than I usually do every month, if you guys don't mind. And thank you for helping to prepare this, I appreciate it. Our treasurer's report, as of July 31st, 2014, we have a balance of three point, just over $3.3 million. As of July 31st, 2013, we had just over $2.9. That's a difference of $363,000, which is a good thing.
People paying their taxes, huh?
Yes, exactly. Our general funds receipts, as of July 31st, 2013, our general fund receipts were three, just over $3.8 million. And as of July 31st, 2014, they were, again, just over 300, $3.8 million, but there's a difference of $41,000, which isn't bad, I mean, considering. Compared to July of 2013, our local real estate taxes in 2014 are up by $56,000. Our real estate transfer taxes are down by $17,000. Our earned income tax is down by $56,000. Our local services taxes are down by $12,000. Our building permits are up by almost $20,000, and our franchise fees are up by almost $10,000. Our general fund expenditures compared to July 31st of last year of 2013, our expenditures were just over $2.6 million. Actually, you know what, I think I need to give more, it's $2,667,212.07. As of July 31st, 2014, it was $2,686, I'm sorry, $2,686,552.18, a difference of $19,340. Compared to July of 2013, our general administration expenses are up by just over $8,000. Our legal expenditure is up by just over $9,000. Engineering expenditures are down by almost $140,000. Our police expenditure is up by, can't even read my own handwriting here, I'm sorry, just over $105,000. Our roads expenditure is up by just over $260,000. Our zoning and code enforcement is up by $27,000. Even though some of these expenditures are up, all of our departments are within budget. This is just comparing it from this year to last year, so. That is my treasurer's report. I did review the bills earlier this afternoon, and everything is okay to be paid.
Any questions by any of my colleagues?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha.
Sure.
Thank you, Mary.
I hear a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. You may want to add to this, Barbara. Mike McGrath, host of WHHY's You Bet Your Garden, will speaking, will be speaking at the Phoenixville Country Club on Wednesday, September 10th, at 7:30 PM. This event is free to Schuylkill Township residents.
Correct. It's part of the four meetings per year that the township has as per our agreement a couple of years ago with the Phoenixville Country Club, and so this will be the third out of the fourth meeting. The fourth one will be Founder's Day on Saturday, November 1st.
I would appreciate it, please, if anybody remembers, one of the best chicken barbecues in the area is gonna be held by our Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company, is holding its annual chicken barbecue on Saturday, August 23rd, from 12 till 5 or until sold out. That's August 23rd on Saturday.
May I get this read?
Yep, it's at the substation on Pot House Road, and I do recommend that you don't wait till 5 o'clock, because they do, they, Jay, what do we have? 300 chickens?
Uh, it's 300 and a half, so we're probably at about 3:25 this year.
3:25, and I showed up at 3:30, and I think I got the second-to-last one. So I recommend that you do go early, and they're locked.
If you have your computer, just divide that in half.
Yeah.
Barbara, you had something else to announce?
Yes. The Schuylkill River Heritage Center at the Foundry in Phoenixville will be hosting a very unusual event on Tuesday evening, September 9th. It is free to the public at 7:30. Stephen Ditman is a noted Chester County historian, and he'll be talking about all of the historic forges in Berks, Chester, Montgomery County, providing the iron ore and processing that for the iron and steel companies in the 18th and 19th century. So they're flyers here on the table, if anyone is interested. This is a service that our museum provides for the community, and will be, again, on Tuesday evening, September 9th, at 7:30. Thank you.
Volunteers are needed for the Great American Cleanup in Schuylkill Township on Saturday, September 27th, in the Pickering Reserve. For more information, contact Earl Schram, uh, Cram, excuse me, Earl Cram of the Township's EAC Council. The Township Administration Office will be closed for our wonderful staff on Monday, September 1st, 2014, for the Labor Day holiday. The Environmental Council is presenting a free workshop on October 9th on the importance of riparian buffers, riparian buffers along the township's waterways. That would be the most interesting one to come, because stormwater management is the big thing anymore, and you want to hear about these ordinances and such on these riparian buffers. It would be beneficial if any of you live on any of these waterways or such like that, or you have any things to do with it within your yards or such, it'd be most beneficial for you to listen to it and find out about it. And the Township Semiannual Shred Event for residents will be Saturday, October 11th, and I'll be bringing that up again on October the 11th, at the Cat Pickering Campus. So that's the shred event on October the 11th, the Cat Pickering. Now, is there any public participation for anything on the agenda? Anything on the agenda?
You can speak up, or?
If it's on the agenda, you can come up and talk. Yeah. Please give your name and such, and you're limited to three minutes.
John K. O., I spoke with Jim, Barbara, and Fred, and Martha. I live across the street from the Levin property, directly across 27th West Pot House Road. So, and as we all know, it's a mess with the plants that come off the property there, and being right across from it, I mean, if there's something we can do, create an ordinance, or, I know we're already, you know, kind of past that point, whatever it may be to create an ordinance of some sort, to get the force of their hand to do something with the property, that would be great. You know, I've taken pictures of the mess it makes to my property between the air conditioning, compressor, the plants, the pool, the, I mean, all over, the windows, the screens, everything. And, you know, going through each year with that, you know, going forward to next year, we have to move that. So, anything we can possibly do to create something, so again, be able to control the, it would be great. You know, we're all the same way, as we've all spoken, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments on, my colleagues?
Thank you for coming in person.
You're welcome. Thank you. To assist the discussion here, I've got some pictures of the, I think it was...
Wait a minute, we're not getting, we haven't got into that yet.
What?
You're talking about the property there?
Yeah, I see.
There may be more in the audience, though.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. We've noticed that the Land property here has, and, shall we say, filled with weeds, and this has been going on for several years, at the minimum, and...
It turns out that it's almost certain that at least one of the weeds is a noxious weed that the Department of Agriculture...
Jim, excuse me, I just like...
We can't overhear you, Jim.
No, I'm sorry. I just like to make a statement before you continue, the board's benefit, I just get a memo from Mr. Brennan about this, and suggesting that we may want to reserve discussion for an executive session. We've had certain correspondence that puts this in a category that it can be discussed privately, so I don't know whether you want to go into this at this point, or save it for an executive session.
Just a brief background, that's all. Because they're gonna be coming up and commenting, so I think it needs some, needs some context. Is this working? Okay, good. So anyway, I was really surprised the other day when I drove by Pot House Road and saw not only this, but I saw the, saw the actual seeds, the seeds from the thistles floating around in the air. In fact, it looked like, sort of like a snowstorm. Unfortunately, I didn't catch that part, but in any event, by the way, this is a view from the intersection of 29th and Pot House, we're looking west along the Pickering Glen walkway path. Pot House Road is just to the right there where the telephone poles are. Over to the left here is a few homes in Pickering Glen, so that's, that's the geography of the situation. All right, this is more of a close-up of what's going on, or what did go on. This was, take, these photos, by the way, were taken July 11th. This is almost certainly Canadian thistle here, going to see Mr. Naddle kindly provided his home in the foreground. He's right across at 13 West Pot House.
Jim, I think you should reserve this for executive session. You're making statements, factual statements that I think should be discussed by the board first. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Well, I, yeah, okay. Here's another view of it, Long Pot House, along the Pickering Glen path. There's a bit of a close-up, where you can see both the seeds and the flowers, and there's an even closer shot showing what the thistles look like. Okay? So, that, that's the context, and that's basically it.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Pete?
Pima Curie, President, Pickering Glen. Those pictures really don't do justice to the Levin property. Those are really great pictures, by the way, but more importantly, you should have taken a picture that shows the dilapidated farmhouse that they have, that a squatter was actually living in, and that actually was taking part of the roof off of the building until he got caught and selling it, so we're going through that as well. But this has been an ongoing process throughout the last 12 years that we've owned the property, but of course, the Levins, as well as the other farm owners, signed their own agreement, being outside of the box of Pickering Glen, so I think any litigation should go after them individually.
I would throw it back at you. You're president of the Home Association, is that correct?
Yes.
What do you, did the Home Association suggest, or how would you help, or what would you do to alleviate some of those problems?
Well, actually, we're the ones that are cutting that patch, and we've paid for 12 years to cut that patch. And for a while, Mr. Colkit was cutting that property and using, you know, grass for hay, but all of a sudden, he stopped after he left the board, and we found out that he wasn't contributing to the homeowners' association, and lo and behold, he's not part of the homeowners' association, so. But, I mean, this, this could have been stopped a long time ago, but more importantly, this is where we are now, and we would sign a petition with all the homeowners to, you know, back this gentleman as far as something needs to be done about him and prompted to take care of his property.
Thank you, Pete.
I'm married back in July, it's on Hollowell Avenue, and I brought you what we put up with. Let you try to live with this. This is the crap that we put up with that flies everywhere, and it ruins our gardens, the tomato plants are dead, the flowers are dead. This is the stuff that flies. I had an air conditioner ruined. My neighbors had their poles, their poles are having problems, and this has been going on. I call every April, and, and I talk to someone in the township office, and she says, "Well, we're sorry, but we have no weed ordinance." And I said, "Well, something has to be done. I have now asthma, I can't go outside, because I can't breathe because of it." And we pay high taxes in Schuylkill Township, and you guys work for us, you're supposed to help us, and now's the time, we really need your help.
I'd have to refute on the taxes, ma'am. In seven years, we have not raised taxes in this township.
Thank you.
But we pay higher taxes than the other townships.
Real estate taxes, I don't think so.
Oh, yes, we do. My daughter pays $97...
Not for, not for Schuylkill Township.
That's not relevant to the conversation.
But, but we...
Well, we're not, we're not into that conversation.
No, we pay good taxes, we expect you to help us. You work for us, and we can't take the law into our own hands.
Well, I was appalled that this has gone on so long, and it has to be taken care of, so.
It certainly does, because those weeds are a health hazard, but not only that, they grow, the ticks, we have deers, there's ticks. If you ever saw, my son has Lyme disease, you would want something done.
Well, you, we can't forget into that. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Russ Hunsberger. I live on 25 West Pot House Road, in my great uncle's house, Milton Steyer, and I take care of my mother. We're directly across the street from this huge patch of weeds, and June, early June, when they bloom and everything comes off, it looks like it's snowed in our yard. It's throughout our house, throughout our cars. My mother really can't sit outside, and she has problems breathing due to it. Our garden is filled with thistles, you know, it's like, anywhere there's bare soil or mold soil, they, they then take root, and I have to treat my yard so they don't grow up there, and it's a real nuisance. The past two years have seemed to be very bad. I did notice, two or three years ago, that somebody actually cut it once or twice that year, and that was about it in the five years that I've been here.
Do you see Mr. Levin here?
So I don't know if it was the person that...
I have no idea what he looks like.
...conferred to have cut it that one time, or not, but it's, it's a real health hazard, and also it really makes the property look like heck. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Levin here tonight?
Who?
Mr. Levin.
One of the owners of the property.
Okay.
I'm Belinda Lindsay, and I'm the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Makins.
Sure.
And I contacted Barbara on this, and I also talked to Martha on the situation. And like I, they have said, the residents don't want to get into legalities or the politics of this, but the situation has gotten to the point now that they are having damage to their homes. We are having health hazards that are now starting to erupt with this situation. And in the past two years, because of the way our climate is, these are multiplying. It's getting more and more and more, and this is why this year, they have really seen it, and it's not only just them, it's me. Like, when I come down to drive, it's a hazard in driving. I mean, when you come down Pot House Road, and it's snowing like that, you can't even see. I mean, it has gotten to the point that it's becoming dangerous in driving down to that point, and like I said, these residents, well, I should ask one question. After this is all said and done, who's going to reimburse them for the damage to their homes and properties, and for their health issues? Who's going to take responsibility for this? Because this is what it's now becoming, and we really do need to do something.
I agree.
And I'm sure, after talking to yous, there is something that can be done.
I'd like, entertain any comments of my colleagues, please. I don't hear any.
Well, I think, as far as I can tell, that these statements are accurate in terms of the description of the scene that you were on. I can't say much about the health issues, but certainly the description of the scene and the effect on the adjacent property is certainly evident.
We're all sympathetic to the situation, and we're trying to find a viable way forward in a way that we don't have at this moment.
I understand, though, that you've notified Harrisburg and Agro Culture something, and because of the Canadian thistle. And they can send someone down to verify that it is, and then you do have a group to go.
We have notified them.
Good, because if something isn't done, I'm going to notify our state senate, and I must have called Channel 6.
That's fine. That's fine. There, there's one thing I want you to understand, though. We can't open the Pandora's Box to write an ordinance on weed control. If we do that, we would really be opening it to a lot, lot of problems throughout our entire township. However, that, that being said, this issue, I was not aware until I started getting some of the letters from you people that live there and such, and seeing what's going on. It's going to be looked into, it's going to be taken care of. We're going to do something about it.
Right.
It has to be done, and we, we've got to put it to bed. I'm surprised that it's gone on this long. It surprises me.
We're all sympathetic to what you are going through. We're just trying to find a way, excuse the pun, through the weeds, to clear ground.
Well, we understand that, but you wouldn't have known the scenario of this unless we brought to you.
And I'm glad you called, Lynn.
And this way, now we can find...
That's why we're here, as was indicated by one of... That's why we're here, as was indicated by one of your neighbors. We are here to serve you and serve everyone in the township. Therefore, here we are in a public platform and you're airing your concerns, which is appropriate.
Does anybody have anything more on this, Jim?
Well, I, I think there's, as many people as feel like they need to make comments should, should have the opportunity.
Do you want to, any more?
I just want to add that, you know, anything that, anything that you possibly do would be great, hoping that, you know, next year we don't have to go through the same thing. And I don't know how quickly anything can move, but going through this again next year would just be awful, knowing that we've come this far already.
Well, I think by what you've brought up and what Mr. McCurry's brought up, I think the issue will be looked at very, very seriously of where we're going to go and what steps we have to take to resolve your problems. Because we, we can't afford you people to be second things to happen to your children and things like that. Very much so. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I understand that.
Would you come up to the?
Yes, Chris Jessupson, I understand that Harrisburg was called.
Well, they were not called, we sent them a letter.
We sent them a letter. Okay, and has there been a response?
No.
No response.
Okay, and when was the letter sent?
Oh, gosh, I don't even have that. It's almost a month ago? It's about a month ago.
Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm Bob Mauk. And I just have a question. Is there another farmer that belongs to mow land and K.K. and use it? Can you, can you try and find one?
Well, the farmer's just got all two cuts on it and back of all problems, right? Once a year. I think he did the same thing for a while.
So, why is that?
I don't know.
I don't know. Wow. Is there, is there another farmer? Oh, no.
Well, it is, it is someone's private property too. I mean, we can't instruct anyone to mow somebody's.
Oh, we can. Apparently, he allowed a farmer to, you know, mow the K.K. And, you know, I would think he would have checked to another farmer.
Has anybody been in contact with Mr. Colkit?
To answer your question, it was June 2nd. The letter was sent to, on June 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Just hang on.
I'd like to, we, we, in the township.
We'll only have one person speak at a time, please.
We in the township have received a letter from the Levin Brothers that owned the property. And it was a long involved letter. I won't go into the details except the very last line or two lines asked us if we had any suggestions about how to take care of the property. So, you know, there's an open.
All right, I think we've.
Exhausted us up.
All right.
I think we need to consider though, too, with the school property going and getting redeveloped, there may be kids.
I already know that, I wasn't going to bring that up now.
So, you have to be concerned about the kids.
Thank you, Pete.
That's definitely will partake in this situation. But we, these people don't have that long to wait. We're talking about by the time they get a spade full in and get, get the architecture done, such like that, it can be 2017. These people want something done before that, so.
So, they could challenge it now? And some juice, would you smoke?
Yes.
No, it's private property.
It's private property. We couldn't go on.
But they, they got the opening up to be able to do something. They have a suggestion. You smell it, tell them a empty bill.
All right, we'll take this under.
I wish we could.
Hang on, hang on. Yes, sir. This is the last question on this subject.
Is there a possibility that you could suggest to them, I don't know how much air they need for the house around it as far as drainage, but that, but say, you know, donate it to the county's open spaces?
Well.
I, I, I think we need to have a clarification here. Mary, you said there was a letter that was sent to the Department of Agriculture?
The June 2nd letter was sent to the, it was a copy to the Department of Agriculture that went to the Levin's.
The Levin's, okay.
Yes.
To the Levin's that lost the letter?
Yes, it was CC to the Department of Agriculture.
So, they would, it would have gone the.
Both entities.
It would have gone the normal, normal route through the secretary and then on down, right?
That's right.
It wasn't addressed to anybody in particular or?
No, I didn't have anyone in particular, but I addressed it to the Department of Agriculture, the Noxious Weed Department, Noxious Weed Control Committee.
Okay.
The Department of Agriculture.
Okay.
All right, let's.
Let's move on, Jim.
Let's move on.
Well, I, no, just a minute here, just a minute.
I gave you, I'll give you five minutes, go ahead.
It, it should be obvious to most of us that there's a weed prob, weed issue, I won't call it problem, weed issue on the Levin property as well as Pickering Preserve, which we've let grow into a natural state. Periodically, we, we, we keep, well, we keep up the, the walking path, the trail. Once a year, it's my understanding that we mow it. I just had a conversation this afternoon with two representatives from the Environmental Advisory Council, one being the chair and the other being the vice chair. And they indicated that the weed, the noxious weeds, as well as some other weeds, could be more controlled on the township property, Pickering Preserve, by timely mowing roughly the end of June, which would then shortcut the, the seed, seed issues for this Canadian thistle and, and any other plants. So, we can take some steps on our property to resolve the issue. It, to the extent that it may contribute to the problem. But, but I think that what we should be doing is doing a follow-up letter, not just a copy, but a direct follow-up letter. And I'm going to make a motion to that, okay? And my motion is, the township wrote a letter to Pennsylvania Secretary of Agriculture, requesting the secretary send an expert to Schuylkill Township to field investigate suspected noxious weeds. Now suspected, okay? They need to verify. On parcels twenty-seven dash five dash seventeen point one, which is twenty-four point nine acres, this is the Levin property. And twenty-seven dash five dash forty-six, which is our Pickering Preserve, which is almost exactly the same acreage, believe it or not, twenty-five acres. And then finally, as part of this motion, since some weeds are already in decline, it is requested the visit, that the visit be scheduled not later than August fifteenth, which is coming up, or as soon as possible, because it may, may or may not be possible. So, that's my motion. I'd appreciate a second.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want more comment, one more comment, if I could, Fred. It's, 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 we're not, we're not asking them to take any action other than check the property.
I want to ensure this goes through the solicitor too.
Yeah, that's all, that's, I just want to be clear that we're asking them to check the property. We're not asking them to do, go beyond that.
Okay. Any other questions? You were talking.
I was just going to ask our solicitor. Is this?
Whether it's appropriate to vote at this time?
Yeah.
Excuse me, is what? Well, what I was going to ask is, have you looked into all the properties in the township? I mean, are you going to do this comprehensively or are you going to? I mean, we have a complaint about this property. You can do it, but, but there's a, if you do a weed ordinance, for example, it becomes township-wide.
I don't want an ordinance.
Are we selecting any particular properties or, or is this a problem that he's addressing right now? I mean, if you're.
Or are there, are there additional?
These are without, these are without a doubt the two largest properties with, with weed issues in the township, okay? The others are golf courses, they're, they're maintained, they're manicured. Or Flintlock Farm, two hundred and sixty acres, but he keeps that pretty, pretty well mowed, pretty well maintained. And I don't know of any other that, that falls into the fifty acre category that we're talking about.
Well, yeah, you're allowed to do it. It's, you just want to be careful about selecting certain properties and not others. Treat everybody the same, that's all. And if this is, if these are the ones that you know about and these ones are a problem, it's why.
Once again, to this, the motion, the motion is not to actually do anything at the moment. It's only to verify from the state level what's there. That's the motion.
You can do that.
So, you, you don't have a problem with that then?
Well, if that's all you're asking, I don't know that that's what they're going to do.
He's not asking to write an ordinance or a resolution. He's just asking to write the letter, to put, put it in motion to find out what they think and what they can do to resolve the issue.
Or at least find out from the state who has control over this stuff, what's what.
All right, the motion's been made, it's been seconded. We've had discussion on it. And I still would like it to go through our solicitor, though, once the letter's written and such, and have him.
Well, I know.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? So, mowed, everybody? By the way, we skipped over, was there any legal matters that you had to discuss at all?
No.
Moving on, the next item will just move on. The next item will be the stormwater management, the continued discussion regarding stormwater concerns at sixteen thirty-seven Jones Lane Township Engineering Review of Possible Options. They gave three scenarios.
Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped an agenda item.
He's not here.
He's not here.
He's not here, I said.
Oh, he's not here?
If you'd, if you'd listened to what I said, I said we're going to move on.
And I think the guy from Jones Lane isn't here either.
Mr. Riffle?
Is he here?
No.
No?
He's not here either.
Okay.
Well, I, I have, I have a comment on this one, which is, the resolution is, is a resolution that, the word illegal.
Jim, Jim, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet, Jim.
We're still, we're still up here. We're not, we're not there in the, on our agenda yet.
We're at new business, Jim.
All right, move on. Is there any other old business?
No.
All right, we're moving into new business. The school district, would you please make your presentation? Frank?
Frank, thank you.
Frank, would you wait around for about ten minutes or so because he has been known to be late?
Thank you, Andy.
I'm not saying we'll do anything, but he is known to.
Thank you for your patience.
And I want to give him as due.
Good evening, I am Andrew Bellwater, Special Counsel to the Kingsley Larry School District. We're here because in July, we submitted a sketch plan for a new school on the Meadowbrook property. We've been before the Planning Commission, the Historic Commission, and the EAC. And we're here tonight to introduce the plans to you. We have with us tonight Dr. Alan Fegley, who is Superintendent for the School District, as well as Josh Gould, who is President of the School Board. Mr. Gould will present the need for the school district and Dr. Fegley will take you through quickly the solution to the need. So, with that, I may ask Josh Gould to step forward.
Thank you. As Mr. Bellwater said, my name is Josh Gould, I'm resident of Schuylkill Township and President of the School Board. And I'm going to talk to you real quickly, just to set the stage with the school district's perception of the need for this project. The school district approximately twenty years ago, as much as twenty years ago, recognized the need to start renovating our facilities that are aging and also expanding in response to growing enrollment. And we've been pursuing that for, as I said, the last twenty years, just starting with the expansion of the high school, which was completed in nineteen ninety-nine, construction of the new Schuylkill School, and recently the construction of the, the new middle school. With those projects, the, the new middle school, the expansion of the high school, we're in pretty good shape in terms of taking care of our students at the secondary level. Where we have issues at this point is really at the elementary level. If you look at our elementary facilities, what we have right now is a kindergarten center over at Second Avenue that serves the kindergarten students of the whole district. We have Schuylkill Elementary, Barclay, and East Pikeville Elementary. Those four schools have a design capacity of one thousand six hundred and fifty students. That's the design capacity. We'd rather be under that, but that's the maximum number that, that they're designed for. In last year, the last school year, the thirteen, fourteen school year that just completed in June, our enrollment for K through five at the elementary level was one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine, about a hundred eighty over the design capacity. If you take that one more step, we look, every year we update our enrollment projections, that we have a contractor comes in and looks at birth rates, developments that are coming, and tries to do twenty-year projections of what our enrollment will be at all of our levels. The projection for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year for K through five is about two thousand.
Wow.
So, three hundred and fifty students over our design capacity. And if you look back at our projections historically and compare them to the actuals, they tend to come in a little, a little higher. The actuals tend to be a little higher than the projections. So, that three hundred and fifty seat gap is more likely to be a little more than three hundred and fifty than less. That's what brings us to look at both short-term and long-term. Because, you know, as you, as you've heard what I said, we're about a hundred eighty over last year. The way we've dealt with that short-term is through modular classrooms, trailers. We have, last year we had fourteen trailers total. There were ten at the kindergarten center, four at East Pikeville. Enrollment continues to grow in order to accommodate our students for the year that's going to start in a few weeks. We spent the summer and we're now finishing up installing four more trailers at East Pikeville. So, eighteen trailers total are going to be able to house about five hundred students for this coming school year. That's the short-term answer. It's not a great answer, it allows us to do what we need to do. But it really doesn't allow us to move into our vision of how we want to deliver our curriculum to our youngest students. So, hopefully, if you have any questions with regard to the need and the numbers, I can answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fegley, who's going to talk about what that vision is and what are the long-term solutions.
And as Dr. Fegley comes up, you've had extensive effort trying to locate where you can place the school. But best-case scenario today, if everything went as planned, the earliest you could open is for the fall of twenty seventeen?
That's right, that same twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year that I was talking about when we expect two thousand K through five students.
And little setbacks then push that start date back into at least the next half year, if not the fall.
Yeah, and we're not real excited about doing things in a half year, it's very disruptive. So, if there were, we, we think very seriously if there were delays about pushing it back an entire year.
Wow.
There's Dr. Fegley with a diagram that depicts the fifty or so acres that's involved here. This would be a building of approximately one hundred fifty-two thousand square feet and some fields. But Dr. Fegley, if you take through the solution.
Thank you very much, my name's Alan Fegley, Superintendent of Schools for the Kingsley Larry School District, heading so for the past four years. With every problem, there's possibilities of solutions. And there's possibilities of how do you grow in a district. For me, is I'm looking at what we need to do. Part of what we really need to do is look and focus on our youngest students, our kindergartners, our first graders, our second, third, fourth, fifth graders. President Gould has presented this scenario where we're really tight at that level. We're, we're, students over, we're adding trailers, we're doing that. But I also want to look on not just building a building, but how do we make it educationally a sound building? And that's part of the reason why we're looking at having a K-one center for the entire school district. We will be forming this as a literacy center where our goal will be to have all students leave or finish their years there on grade level for reading. So, that's a very important goal, what we're looking at. So, what we have over here, this is the Meadowbrook property. Up here, just to try to orient you a little bit, here's the new middle school. Up here is the high school, tennis courts, and some current fields have been put in. Over on this side, you have Route twenty-nine. This way, we have Pot House Road. On the Meadowbrook property, what we are proposing very, right now, is that we have an entrance here at Trotter Drunk that this will be for the car traffic coming in. So, this is car traffic going in. Way in the back, and we purposely situated the building in the back of the property so it would be not right up here on the front, but in the back, we have our large building that's taking place. This is actually two schools in one. On this side, we have our kindergarten, first grade, early literacy center. On this side, we have a second through fifth grade. Because with the implementation of the K-one center, we will turn Schuylkill School to Barclay School, as well as this school to be two to five buildings. That would be part of the goal, what we do. By doing that, we'll actually get Schuylkill School from where it is right now, about seven hundred and thirty students, to about six hundred students and actually give us some room to grow at Schuylkill School, which would be a nice feeling to have for the first time in a number of years. Same situation exists. Same situation exists at Barclay School. We are over capacity at Barclay School, we need to get some students out. But we also need to give ourselves room to grow, because as we're listening to what the developments are there taking place, we have a number of new developments that are getting ready to come in. And while we hope we factor the right numbers in, we're still looking at that. Anyway, back to this. So here's our early literacy center, here's our two to five building. The center section or the core is where we'll have the gymnasium, the cafeterias, and a library. So that will be shared space. By doing a combination building, we're actually reducing costs because we don't have to build multiple infrastructures. As I indicated earlier, parents would come in this way, and for those who are dropping off, this would be the main entrance to the building. One of the things that we wanna do there is we wanna always separate bus traffic from parent traffic. By placing the building in the back portion of this property, we have a wonderful opportunity. That is currently, our buses to the secondary campus come up Pot House Road, come in this way, and then loop up around here to drop students up at the high school, and then buses come here and drop students off at the middle school. That takes place about seven-thirty, seven forty-five in the morning. We can then use this exact same infrastructure to bring our elementary students in at eight-thirty in the morning. They would come in, they would come up. Instead of going up and around, they would come down and around, loop through here. We would have our drop-off, this would be their entrance, and then their buses would head on back out. This way, we have complete separation of bus traffic and parent traffic. Really improving the safety of the situation. But additionally, it saves us from building a massive road system back here, we're now being able to utilize that. In addition to this location, we have fields over here. These would be fields for use by the students during the day, the elementary students during the day, but also for our secondary campus students. Currently, we have nineteen buses over the course of the year, nineteen teams that go off campus in order to take care of the fields, we don't have enough fields. By adding these fields in, we'll be able to reduce that down to two to three buses going off. So we won't get all teams on the field area, but we'll get most teams onto the field area. That way, we'll reduce more bus traffic at that three to four o'clock time and keep everybody safe here on our campus. We're also looking at a lot of green space. This area down here, we're not looking at developing right now. We're looking at having it as a nature studying area for the students, walking paths, et cetera, for everyone to take place. These buildings are the current buildings on the property. These two are historic buildings, from what we know. We haven't been able to get inside them yet to really see them, but we understand that they're historic. We understand this to be a pole barn, and we recently learned that that was built in nineteen ninety, so I don't think that's very historic in the process. Our goal is to maintain these buildings and work with the Historic Commission to make sure that these are maintained well. This building here is a shed for our maintenance team. If you think about this, we will now have middle school, high school, elementary building. Right over here, we'll have Schoolville School, and up this way, we'll have Barclay School. We'll have lots of our resources right here in the center. Currently, our maintenance department is over at Valley Forge Christian College in some of the old World War II barracks that are out there. We would like to close those down, bring the entire facility a little bit closer. We're currently proposing that this building would be, it hasn't really been fully designed, but we're starting to design it, have what we'll call a Chester County look, we'll put some stone on it and try to make it look as nice as possible. But by placing it here, we get our facilities management's right here on the campus area to really help reduce all the travel that they do throughout the day. So in general, that is the overview of the property. It has a lot of pluses to it. Part of the reason we looked at this property is it's also central to the entire Kingsley River School District. If we're bringing all the kindergarten and first graders together, we don't wanna have them going off to the far East Pikeville end or off to the far end of Schoolville Township. So centrality also is very good for this particular property. We've been trying to be proactive in our approach, talking to people, working with people. We met with some neighbors way back in, I want to say February or March, if I remember correctly. We have recently sent out new notices that we wanna meet with the neighbors again. That meeting will take place, the first of them will take place next Tuesday, August twelfth, and we again have another meeting set up for Tuesday, August ninth, Tuesday, September ninth, for some more additional meetings. We encourage people to come and talk to us, we have many building and grounds meetings, we had one last night. We'll have our next one on September second. We encourage folks to come to the building and grounds meetings, have a good conversation with us about what is taking place. But this is an exciting project, not only because we're actually able to have room for our kids, but actually will help create the learning environment we need in order to help make sure all children reach their fullest potential.
So we have consultants here, in case there are questions, I know it's early yet in the process. We've submitted a sketch plan so that your consultants can start to review it and provide us feedback. Together with the sketch plan itself, we submitted a request to amend the zoning ordinance. And part of the idea there is, when we initially approached the township about this, we thought that the zoning that exists now was not necessarily appropriate for the school district, and we came forth with the idea of rezoning all the school district property into the more appropriate zone, which seems to be the public facility zone. And I believe the township is of like-minded, its property should be in that type of zone. So we've presented a proposal as regards amendment. I understand that there will be a meeting scheduled to address those specific topics, and certainly the township will need input from its consultants so that there are no unintended consequences of these zoning ordinance. So with that, unless you have any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a postscript and a compliment, because I think the plan that you've presented it is excellent. And as you talked about, synthesizing the various levels of the students in this property and the way you've separated the buses from the car traffic is excellent. And as President of the Schoolville River Heritage Center, we've had students from Barclay and Schoolville School come. And to echo what Mr. Gould had said, we used to have like four groups of twenty. Now we have six groups in the past two years of fourth graders coming through to tour the museum at the Schoolville River Heritage Center. So I concur very much so with your need to increase space and do it in a reasonable, rational, and thoughtful way. My compliments.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Is this an all-day session for kindergarten too? In other words, all grade levels, you don't have a partial pickup at noon time?
That is optional for the parents, they may choose either half-day or full-day with enrichment. Right now, if we look at our typical numbers, eighty-five, eighty-seven percent of our kindergarten parents are thinking of full-day option.
Wow.
How many students will be attending kindergarten plus second through fifth at that school alone?
In this school, we will have approximately three hundred and twenty-five seats for kindergarten, three hundred and twenty-five seats for first grade. So if you've been looking at about six fifty to seven hundred, depending on how we look at that, we're looking at approximately five hundred students in the two to five building.
Are you up to come out?
What I can tell you right now is, I'm getting ready to start talking to the school board about building another school in about five years.
Wow.
Where?
I don't know.
My only concern is-
But I'm just telling you that if our projections keep going the way they are, and we'll have better data in October. If it keeps going that way, we'll be looking at another elementary school, potential another-
Maybe across the street on the Vinn property.
My only concern is, we're now, it's, because I'm the Chair of the Police Department, and it's, and fire, is have you spoken to both Chiefs, Jay Cole and Jim Fetterman? Because we're gonna have security issues now. Now we have another eleven hundred children that are now in the Schoolville Township that even though they're not, their parents aren't residents of our township, we now have to police and make sure they're secure. Not only do we have Schoolville Elementary, now we have another kindergarten center and elementary schools. I'm worried about, I mean, that's more a tax burden on our taxpayers because now, do we have to hire more police, do we have to? We got traffic issues, we got, are there gonna be accidents? And that's a whole thing that I gotta worry about. Those are my big concern of being in charge of both of those areas, that can we be sufficient enough to protect our children, and then everybody's children?
It's a great question. When I actually started here, you had a middle school that was on the Schoolville Township, and you would be sending over, the middle school was about seven hundred and eighty students. I would posit that middle school students can be a bit more challenging than that kindergarten, first grade, elementary students.
I understand.
So that has since moved off, is now within the borough. So I do need to have a conversation with Chief Fetterman. He's a great person, we've worked together on lots of projects, to make sure that we do have the right security measures taking place. Part of the reason we're making sure we have all the separations, we're getting all the cameras in there, we'll have the state-of-the-art cameras so that he would be able to access everything remotely and do work that way. So that's part of the design that's taking place. So I look forward to those conversations and truly believe that we can all work together for the better.
No, of course, thank you.
With your attendance, hang on folks, just a minute.
Thank you. As to traffic, we've tried to be proactive. We've met with the township folks, we've met with PennDOT already, and we already have our engineers working on what's needed to make sure it flows freely.
Good, thank you.
Are you already up with the new building and such? Are you already up to the state capacity of class size? Or not class size, but the number of students you could have in the school?
We will have room to grow, right now, for a few more years. And then I'm looking, like I said, I'm looking at adding a potential number of students.
You do have room to grow though?
We do have some room to grow, yes.
Okay, excuse me for just a minute, there's some people that wanna ask you some questions.
And we're making some Holloway Avenue. And what I'm concerned about, the golf course is about fifty-eight acres. Why did they put the maintenance shop right in my backyard? Right as plain as could be, you could see, big maintenance shop. I've been there thirty-six years and it's a disgrace of what's going to come, really. I don't know why you can't move it. There's two houses on Holloway Avenue that you guys are going to be almost in our backyard. Why can't that be moved? You've got fifty-eight acres, why can't it be moved?
They're not saying that they, if I can speak for them, that is a temporary setup of where they have, they haven't established the exact location where that building's gonna be.
I hope the Schoolville Township realizes what's coming, really.
We don't tell the owner where they put their-
I know you don't know. But would you like something like that in your backyard?
No, of course not.
It's gonna be a big building for all them, for all them coming from the thing out there that she does, school, all the equipment. My next-door neighbor, yeah, the noise, my next-door neighbor, his wife's gonna have a baby September. Do you think it's gonna get rusted off and all the noise? Really, think about it.
We will.
It's a disgrace to have a big building like that. You walk out your back door and that's what you see, really.
Well, my one concern is the traffic because you're starting at seven o'clock in the morning, and you're going to eight-thirty with traffic. I can't get down Pot House Road now in the morning when you're mixing, when you're mixing workers. It's a cow path road, you've got two places to get out. I live up on, off of Hairs Hill Road to come down through. I'm stuck on the seven twenty-four-one thirteen just trying to get down Pot House Road. Now, he's trying to say it's gonna be increments, no, it's not. Because you're gonna have one set of buses going down, plus you got a mix of people trying to get to work, and then right behind, you got another set of buses coming down. It's a mixture of all heavy buses and people trying to get down Pot House Road in the morning. And then you have people all day long. If you have kindergarten where they're gonna be picking up, so now you have a half-day, there's more traffic there again. And then you have all weekend, because those fields are not gonna be used just on a daily basis. Come weekend, people are gonna wanna use those fields. Those people are gonna have to put up with a constant around-the-clock of people and heavy traffic in and out of there. And it's not fair to the residents sitting there. And we also worry about the water runoff, because they're starting now to worry about that.
I think that some of your concerns, although they're justified.
Right, because I did agree with you.
Excuse me, please, let me finish. I think you should come to the Planning Commission and talk to the Planning Commission before it comes to the BOS.
Right, well, I've been to a lot of their meetings with the group of residents.
I understand, so have I.
And I've organized it and took the residents.
They've done an outstanding job, so.
Right, and the residents are really upset about it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, regarding the traffic situation, we've been copied on a, on a letter by the Transportation Engineers of Gilmore that I think evaluated your engineers, Transportation Engineers, somebody's analysis of Pot House and twenty-nine. And the upshot of this is, it looks like we're moving, the advice is moving in the direction of left-turn lanes on all four corners.
I know, but Daniel's thinking about closing, which you would not be aware either, of two of the main roads. Well, if they close gay, the main is Campbell Road coming in there, that's not even basically a road. That's just like a little path going out of there, and that's dangerous with that coming out of there with that hill for these residents. You have to realize, this whole section on Halliwell is almost seniors.
It's almost what?
Senior citizens. We only have really one young group back there, and the rest are all seniors.
If I remember correctly, they're concerned with that too, and that's what I say, is bring it up with the Planning Commission to what we can do.
So, like I said, there is concerns about it.
And to their credit, they are listening to what you have to say.
We're listening, and the township has requirements under its ordinance-
That's correct.
-to study things like stormwater, runoff, traffic, and so we'll comply with all of that.
Understood. Yes, Peter?
Dr. Fegley, I apologize, I must have missed the memo because our, the dome is right across the street from me and yet to get any information. So it would help us if we could be part of the process.
Please call us on Tuesday the twelfth, I'll give you a call with the exact time.
Okay, great, that'd be great.
And what setup we need for a meeting if you want to come in, as you did a long time. If I come on in, we'll sit down and talk to you.
It looks like a great plan, but I agree with the young lady that just stepped up. If you're gonna put a traffic light there, you have to, you have to get in that traffic at seven-thirty in the morning and see how long it takes you to go all the way to the bottom of the street. It takes forty-five minutes, okay? And with these, with a light being put there, she's right, it's gonna be murder for us getting a light development.
The light being placed where?
Or what?
Trotters Lane.
Trotters Lane, right. Okay, so the light being placed here is up to PennDOT, you don't control whether it is or not. I'll be honest, I think it would make the traffic flow if you sit and sync this light with the light down here. But I am, and then also going the other direction, but I'm not an expert on that. So a lot of the street improvements, we're waiting to hear back from PennDOT.
Exactly, so it's premature, good.
We do know this is a major problem, so.
That intersection twenty-nine and Pot House. That was an intersection that was scheduled for improvement back in seventy-four, okay? And part of what we're looking at and what we think is the proposal from our experts, all this is very, very close to what was proposed way back in nineteen seventy-four. How all this development occurred in this township without that intersection being improved, I don't know. But clearly, as a school district, we understand our obligation to make sure that the traffic flows. Our engineers are telling us that we'll actually improve that intersection and move the traffic to their quicker, especially with the left-hand turn lanes. Every so often, I get to go home at five o'clock at night, it's a great thing. But I can tell you, coming up Route twenty-nine, where we have no traffic on there at all, it's backed up all the way down to the crypt. And it's because, simply because people cannot make a left-hand turn.
Exactly.
And yet everyone backed up. That's one of the improvements we know we're gonna have to make. So that should help the traffic flow. We're also looking at other right-hand turns. People can make a right-hand turn while they're simply waiting for a left-hand turn as trying to get out and go down twenty-nine going south. At that same time, I'm often in the line at five or six o'clock at night, and it's always because of the left-hand turns. If there's more than two cars backed up there, I can't go straight. So there are, there are issues, there are absolutely no doubt about that. The issues are way beyond what we're doing, but I think as a district, we're going to take on the obligation of trying to help improve that intersection.
I mean, the point about the left-hand turns, I mean, that's valid, but it's about the people that are gonna go straight instead of going left.
Well, that's, they'll be able to go straight there. With the left-hand turn, if you put the left-hand turn in, you're able to go straight. So you get the two lanes in there so you can keep the traffic flowing.
I think we can discuss this later. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think this is probably-
Please come up to the microphone.
Just using a problem here, I think.
Thank you.
As soon as this is probably gonna be the subject of a discussion between the residents of Pickering Glen and yourself, but I think you answered a question that Mr. McCurry didn't ask. You're focused on twenty-nine and Pot House. Mr. McCurry asked you about the intersection of Pot House and Trotters. If there's going to be a light there, I think there's a lot of residents that have a question. What do you do about the fact that the ingress and egress in Trotters is one lane? Because when the development was built, they had to make the island wide to save those trees. Because when the development was built, they had to make the island wide to save those trees. What does that mean for expansion of the road on Trot, on Pot House north of Pot House and south of Pot House? What does that mean to the residents of Pickering Land? And what does that mean to the traffic pattern that may simply complicate what you're trying to solve at 29 and Pot House? But the problem is a little bit farther west, and I think that's the question Mr. McCurry has.
See, I wasn't trying to avoid it. I don't actually have the answer to that because we're still waiting to hear back from Pendott. We do have some plans. And I would encourage you to come to our building grounds meeting because even last night, we were sitting there looking over plans that we're getting ready to submit to Pendott and waiting for replies back from Pendott.
Yeah, I'm hopeful if we go to a meeting, we'll get more information again tonight as opposed to, you know, still to be determined.
Just a quick comment on that. Talking about further west at Pot House and Charlestown Road, they're also looking, the engineers are also looking at that intersection to see if they can speed up the flow there. Apparently, there's a few more problems involved than at the Pot House 29 intersection, which I find hard to believe, but I'll...
We understand that it's a major problem, and so does the school district. The school district is looking into it, and we will work together to resolve the situation.
At the meeting on the 12th of the night, do you expect to have more information from Pendott? Or is it simply going to be a summary of what we're hearing tonight?
It will be, we can give more detail than, you know, show you the plans and what it is, but do I expect your anything from Pendott now?
Okay, what is that timetable?
We all know that Pendott moves slower than a glacier.
I wish I could tell you. I'm hopeful that we have good information by next week.
Okay, folks, let's move forward. All right, do you not, does it pertain to this?
Yes, yes.
All right.
It's one of the two meetings. I don't know which day it is. It's at 1:30 in the afternoon, which means there's a possible meeting up there.
That's why we also got scheduled about 6:00, 6:00 o'clock. We also have one scheduled at 6:00 at night because we heard from the residents and some of the senior citizens wanted an afternoon meeting, and some of the other folks wanted an evening meeting. So we're trying to accommodate both.
So both meetings, same people, same information?
Yep. Good question, thank you.
Any more discussion on this, anymore?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything. It's certainly needed.
We're going back to sharing more.
Great, thank you.
Are you sure that you'll be at the planning commission? All right, let's move on, folks. Thank you. The acceptance of the real estate tax collector audit?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Fred, can we take like two minutes to let everybody clear out?
No, thank you.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Guys, if you could take your conversations out in the hallway so we can continue our meeting. Sorry, Fred. Take...
Thank you. What did he say?
Thanks, thank you, yes. All right, I want to move forward to the acceptance of the real estate tax collector audit. Do I hear a motion?
I moved.
I made the motion.
Oh, she made the motion, I seconded.
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Move on to resolutions and ordinances. The first motion to approve resolution 2014-10 to participate in the Central Westmoreland COG from September 30th, 2015, or 2013, excuse me, to September 30th, 2014. It's a resolution that we pass every year in our vehicles and such like this. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
I'll second it.
Mary, would you explain to everyone what it's all about?
Yeah, the Council of Governors, for the Central Westmoreland, it basically gives us another avenue for purchasing equipment to be able to get a better price for. And my apologies, that resolution should be from September 30th, 2014 to September 30th, 2015.
It is.
Yes, but on the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 2013's gone.
Can I make the motion?
Thank you. Well, I'll make the amended motion for 2015.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Motion to approve resolution 2014-11 regarding township repair of water drainage and stormwater drainage issues. I don't think this motion can be made. Go ahead, motion on private property.
Well, if I could comment on this...
You can comment, but I don't think that...
Yeah, I think we need some more legal information on this one.
I agree.
Okay?
Yep.
So let's, let's, I guess we can table it again?
All right. We just don't say anything. Is that possible? Yeah. Anything on two-minute reports? Anything additional business? Any public participation?
Not on the agenda.
No.
That's not, hang on. I understand that.
My name's Aaron, I'm the resident. So I understand the bridge on Route 23 is going to be closed.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a plan?
We're all going to suffer together.
We're all, we all don't know. Pendott has not let us...
We're going in traffic, especially during rush hour.
I am appalled by it.
We're all very upset.
Yeah, there will be for the first couple of days, just to get everybody acclimated. Once everybody realizes that the bridge is going to be closed for a long period of time, they're going to take different routes. So we're going to probably have it, Chief, what are you saying? We were talking about it. I didn't get the, we're still working out the details on how many we're going to have, where we're going to put them because, I mean, you're shutting down a major artery of our township, and you have multiple lights and situation where we're going to, where we're going to put everybody.
We do understand the dilemma.
Yeah, and we're way ahead on it.
I just heard that Pendott is just doing bids now, and they're going to close in March. That's what I heard this week.
We have no confirmation.
We have no, we have no confirmation.
So we don't know when it's going to be closed?
We're hearing all kinds of rumors. I heard September, I've heard December, I've heard March. It's all rumors.
The month September.
And then poof, it's magically going to appear, so we don't have to worry about it closing down? Mary, there was an adjective used by them as to what they were going to do with this thing.
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
Yes, what does that mean?
Okay, folks.
If after that first week, you find that traffic is still horrendous, will you keep police out today?
Yeah, we'll still have, have them out there.
We'll have it on the website and such like that.
It's going to be, I mean...
Aaron, current?
Yeah, I mean, Aaron, it's, even when we had just that tree down on 23, with 23 being shut down from the freak storm that came through, we had police out and they were directing traffic for almost eight or nine hours a day. I mean, we just, we just asked residents, if their barricades are, don't go around the barricades. They're up there for their, for your safety.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so, yeah, perfect.
As soon as we have more concrete information, believe me, we want to let everyone know.
Absolutely.
It's going to affect all of us. Yeah, thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything more for public participation?
No, sir.
Or anything odd on the agenda? All right, entertain. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
No.
No, to go into executive.
Okay, just a minute, I'm going to do that in a minute. We're going to go into executive session for personal matters and any litigation?
Make a motion?
I'll second. We second, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Do we have any more comments? We want to come out of executive session. We discussed personal issue and litigation matters. Is there any other matters before the board?
No, sir.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.